Good evening and welcome to the Fine People of Putnam Valley. This is the Putnam Valley Board of Education Work Session Business Meeting of September 12th, 2019. Please join me in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Some quick business off the top. I resolve to approve the minutes for the August 22nd, 2019 meeting of the Board of Education.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We move straight into presentations. We have a presentation from KG&amp;D Architects. Jeremy, you got something to say?
All right, so with us today, we have Kevin Sawyer, our construction manager, Theresa May, and Sue Davidson. Theresa May and Sue Davidson's from KG&amp;D are architects. So over the summer, we got to see some new renderings. Over the last month or so, we've been working on finishes, sort of the interior design aspects. So the three of them are going to present a little bit about what is this space going to look and feel like, as well as some of the logistics around the timing and what the construction zones, the logistics and all that good stuff. All right, so I'll turn it over to Theresa May. Thank you.
Good evening. So my name is Theresa May, and I'm associate with KG&amp;D Architects, and I'm a project architect for the capital projects here at Putnam Valley. And just like Jeremy said, we're going to just walk through where we are with the projects. So over the summer, we've completed design development, which is about 60% of the way through the process of design. KG&amp;D and Triton, the construction managers, have done detailed cost estimates, and we're on target with our budget currently. We've engaged geotechnical engineers and environmental engineers to perform testing of the existing conditions. We've started talking about phasing and logistics, and we've even gone to visit a couple of other facilities, one at West Point and one at New Jersey Institute of Technology, to get a feel for what the indoor turf field at the high school would be like. So we'll start our presentation with the elementary school. The goal of the elementary school is to provide a science classroom maker space that can be shared amongst all of the grade levels and to update the multipurpose room. So this is the plan of the first floor of the elementary school, and you'll see in the light gray, we have the auditorium and the adjacent room, which is currently the faculty room, which will be joined with the office next door to create the maker space. This is a plan, two plans of the maker space. On the left is the floor plan, and you see that we have a fun tile pattern going all over the floor. And on the right is the reflected ceiling plan showing what some of the lighting will look like. This is a rendering of one half of the room that'll be focused on science caseworks. This is more of the science lab side. We have science casework and lab tables around the perimeter with movable tables with some fun stools that can move around the room. They can also unstack. They kind of look like oil drums, but they're actually three pieces that can come apart, and you can reconfigure them however you'd like. This is the other side of the room, so it was at the bottom of the page in the plan, and this is focused on maker space storage and also features flexible seating that can be rearranged and configured however you'd like. And I noted the fun lighting. We have these kind of extruded or dropped down recessed lights or kind of dropped down lenses in a standard acoustic ceiling tile grid, and they just add a little interest to the ceiling. In the auditorium, the improvements are really kind of focused on infrastructure. So we will be providing air conditioning to the auditorium, which is one of the biggest features, and then we're updating the lighting, improving the acoustics with additional acoustic panels on the ceiling. And on the left is the plan of the auditorium, and at the bottom of the page are the existing stepped seating that's at the rear. Currently, it's just painted. We're going to carpet it to make it more comfortable and kind of use two different patterns of carpet to codify seating areas versus walking areas. Also noted on this plan are two red triangles. The other infrastructure part of the auditorium is that we're going to add AV cabling that will enable presentations and improve how the AV is set up in the room. So actually, I'm going to go back to the elementary school for a second. So I'm going to turn the mic over to Sue Davidson, who's going to show you some of the finishes that we plan for the elementary school.
Hi, I'm Sue Davidson, as she said, and I am an associate principal with KG&amp;D Architects. And this board here that we're showing you has the rendering that you saw on the screen, and it just shows, has physical pieces of some of the materials that we'd be using. You have an adorable vinyl floor in a couple of different colors. It's tile formatted 12 by 24. You have a solid surface corian top that would go next to the sink so that it'll be a long-lasting type of casework built in. And it shows we're using some laminate, some light color laminate to match the new doors for your base cabinets and for your shelving. And this just shows the paint colors. Up here, this just shows your standard acoustic tile that will keep the room a little quieter. And on this half of the board, we have the auditorium. And really, as Theresa said, we're just doing some infrastructure work, so maybe it's not much to see, but this is an acoustic panel. And it's just to show you that we're going to put these acoustic panels on the ceiling, and so it'll look almost like it's the way it looks now. It'll be a solid ceiling, even though it'll be panels, but it'll have much better acoustics in that space. Right here, these are two light fixtures we're looking at. We're trying to light the room with just these side sconces that would give you ambient light through the whole space that would be on a dimmer, so that when you're playing ball and everything, you're not worried about the ball, you know, that's hitting the ceiling right now. And so we're working on that. And then, as she mentioned, the back area, we're looking at some carpets to put on those stairs.
Thank you. Next, we'll talk about middle school. So the middle school renovations are a little more involved. We're going to be renovating the cafeteria into a social commons, which involves enclosing the existing courtyard. We're going to improve the acoustic performance of the music and band rooms that are next to the current cafeteria. Then there's going to be renovations of both of the cores at the first floor and on the second floor at the classroom wing. So we'll have a new nursing suite, as well as a new guidance suite on the second floor. The gymnasium is also going to receive some light renovations, some light renovations, and then we're replacing all of the windows in the entire school. This is the floor plan of the first floor of the middle school. The gray areas indicate where we are not doing work, and the white areas indicate where we are doing work. So you'll see in the bottom left-hand corner, that's where the cafeteria and the existing courtyard are, and that space gets joined with the courtyard infill. So you see the learning commons to the right and the flex maker space to the right are part of the existing building, but they also overlap with the courtyard. Oh, I can point with the mouse. Excellent. So this area right in here, this area right in here is currently the courtyard. We're going to fill that in, take down the wall between the existing cafeteria and the courtyard to increase the seating capacity of the cafeteria. We're also increasing the footprint of the kitchen. So this would be the new kitchen layout with a new servery. So previously, the students came in on either side of the kitchen and queued up on either side of the kitchen and then got their food and then went into the cafeteria. Now they'll come into the cafeteria from either side, and they'll come into the survey on the right and the left, use the multi-stationed servery to select what they would like to eat, and then come out via the cashiers this way. So this kitchen will be a cooking kitchen, so the middle school will no longer rely upon the high school for preparing the meals. This is a rendering of the new learning commons. So this is going to be kind of a new library and study space for the middle school, which will replace the hall room that's on the second floor. This is a rendering of the new social commons, as viewed when you enter the social commons. You see the existing stage is still there on the left, but you have the new expanded kitchen on the right behind the wood paneling. We'll have new flooring, new ceiling treatments, and new acoustic tiles on the walls. So at the back of the rendering, you see kind of the checkerboard pattern on the wall. Those are acoustic tiles to help with the sound in the social commons. This is a view looking from the opposite side of the room towards what is the maker space on the far right and the learning commons at the left, and you see this new servery on the left of the drawing with the cashier stations floating out in the cafeteria. This is the first floor core of the middle school. So this is where the new nurses' office will be, and there'll be renovations to all the bathrooms on this floor as well. On the left, you'll see two faculty toilets that are ADA, meet ADA design standards, as well as a student toilet that also meets ADA's design standards. There's a new nurses' suite that has a new countertop, new refrigerator, and its own handicap-accessible toilet. At the far right, you see two new multi-user toilets for the students. And in the center, we have two new small group instruction rooms. This is the second floor of the middle school, and as you can see, the gray areas again indicate areas of no work, and the white areas indicate areas where we're working. We're really looking to create a guidance suite in the core of the second floor. And this is what that guidance suite looks like. There's the four offices, as well as the assistant principal's office and a conference room. And the existing copy room will have a door off of the corridor. This is the revised main entrance of the middle school. So we're going to demolish the existing canopy over the main entrance and create a new polycarbonate canopy with a steel structure. So it'll be a steel structure with a translucent roof on it, and there's some natural stone at the base. And that canopy will span the main entrance as well as the secondary exit out of the social commons. So I'll turn it over to Sue to talk about some of the interior finishes of the middle school.
Okay. Before I talk about the interior finishes, so let me just show you, we have this board which indicates all the exterior finishes. It shows, here's the view that you saw on the screen, and these other finishes are the materials that are in this picture. So this is the stone base of all of these piers here, and then from that, we have a steel that comes up that's kind of a warm gray color, and then the steel at the very top is a little bit darker, and then you have the polycarbonate roof on it, and it'll all be lit up too with LED lighting. And then, I'm not going to talk about what's on the bottom here because that's the high school. And then this finish here, though, is, that's your window finish. You have the metal trim around your windows, and it's called a color called champagne. It's kind of a warm gray color. If we go to the inside of the middle school, again, you see this rendering here. All the floors inside this space will have a durable, easily maintained vinyl floor, and you can see we have a couple of, we have more of a pattern in the cafeteria and more of a wood look in the walkway, and we do that mainly because the State Education Department likes us to identify what the path of egress and how you get to rooms. So if you were coming down this walkway, on your right-hand side would be that maker space room and that other learning commons rooms that we were referencing. The materials on this board are, we have some of the fabrics for the acoustic panels. We have a vinyl that's for the built-in bench that's along the back here. We have the tiles, which will just be on the half-wall in your servery space, just for maintenance, so you can wash those down. I know Theresa, she referred to this as the wood paneling. I should fix that in that it's a wood look paneling. It's actually FRP panels, which are impact-resistant, highly durable, washable panel, so it's not really wood, but it'll look like wood. It's very pretty. Some of the other finishes on this board are, you know, there's a tile on the floor in the kitchen. These are your ceiling tiles up here. And then we did put in some nice lighting here. You've got some linear, it's all LED lighting, lighting here and some linear lighting here, and then some large pendant-like rectangle lighting that hangs down in the high ceiling of the cafeteria. I guess the other thing we have here is this ceiling right here has like, almost like an ombre type of effect. It's an acoustic ceiling, but it kind of goes like from a light gray to a dark gray, just to create a little more interest from all the white ceilings that we have. This next board shows the learning commons and the maker space, and this is, these are pictures of the learning commons. As you saw, we have a built-in, we have some built-in counters in there. We have a few built-in booths at the very back of the space. And again, it has the vinyl flooring, wood look flooring. It has a quartz countertop, which is very durable. It has vinyl seat on your booth in the back. It has an indoor/outdoor fabric on the back of the booth to add a little color there. And we actually, in both rooms, we've got a drapery that's kind of, you don't really see it. It's actually going to be hidden off to the side, and the idea of that is if you have a lockdown in those spaces, because we've got these big open windows, that it's a draw curtain, so you can just draw it shut, and then you can't be seen in there. We also have, you know, just a standard ceiling tile in there. We have a few surface-mounted, like little cubes in the very back where this booth is, just to make it a nice spot. And then we have this one type of resin material that's also just back in the booth, which is kind of the special spot in that space. The rest of the space would be freestanding furniture that's flexible, that you can move around and set up however you'd like. The other board that we have here has finishes for the bathroom and for the nurses' office. Oops, they're starting to fall off. We have a porcelain tile for the floor, a blue porcelain tile. You have a white subway tile for the walls, and then there's an accent tile of a blue penny rounds around, just by the mirror. You'll have HDPE partitions, which are those heavy-duty plastic partitions in there. And then in the nurses' area, you have cubicle curtains and cabinets, and this actually is just a big piece of the cubicle curtain. You can see it's sticking to it. You can see it's really just, that's how they sample it, so that's how I put it on here, but it's just a nice color, because the nurses' area, we have to remember, is an inside room, so we just want to keep it kind of bright in there. But they get new cabinetry, which is laminate, again, with the quartz counter, because there's a sink there. And the faculty room, there's a couple of miscellaneous pieces of millwork that happen, like the faculty room has a little cabinet that's plastic laminate with a corian top for, you know, just for their lunch, you know, with a microwave and a refrigerator. And then there's a little bit of work happening in the corridors, and in the corridors, we'll just have a standard VCT tile, which is vinyl composition tile.
Great. And that brings us to the last project we have for Putnam Valley, which is the High School Health and Wellness Center. So the High School Health and Wellness Center is going to feature an indoor turf facility with, I'll bring you to the plan, with. So it'll be an indoor turf facility with a walking path around the perimeter that's striped into the turf, so the turf will run wall to wall. There'll be a series of dividing curtains. One is a perimeter curtain that will separate the walking surface or the walking area from the play area. Another is a divider curtain that will allow the right and left side of the building to be used independently. Also, there will be ceiling-mounted batting cages. So the curtain that divides the building into the right and the left, you could potentially have an athletic class happening on the right half, and then on the left half, we also have three collaborative workstations. It was six collaborative workstations, rather. So in the bottom left-hand corner and the top right-hand corner, there are three stations with interactive displays, and there will be folding mobile tables that can be pulled out to those locations, so that you could use this for a physics class or a health class. You could do some sort of experiment, gather data, and go back to the collaborative workstations to analyze it and present it, all in the same space. So this is an exterior rendering of the Health and Wellness Center. We have massaged the footprint a little bit to have it sight better on the hill. This is an interior rendering, so looking at the left half of the plan. This shows those collaborative workstations when they're deployed. So the interactive displays will be in cabinets that close and lock, so that they're protected when there is an athletic event going on, a sporting event. But when they're open, you can activate the display, do your analysis on your data, and then present. Also, at the right of the screen right now, we have, you'll see the brown area, that's actually an area that's designated for mounting kinesiology equipment. So there's a lot of jump ropes and wall-mounted straps and weights and barbells and things that can be mounted to this wall and used in this space. This is an interior rendering showing when those collaborative workstations are closed. So you see three white boxes on the wall. Those are the cabinets that contain the television, so they just close, lock, the tables fold and nest in the corner, so it's easy to set up and break down the classroom. See, there's kind of a track going around the room. That's the track for the walk draw perimeter netting. It'll be in four pieces. You can walk it across the floor to gather it to each corner of the building to get it out of the way, or simply pull it out when you do want to separate that walking path from the play surface. We also have large, what look like windows, but it's actually a cow wall system, and it's a fiberglass panel, two pieces of fiberglass panel that are sandwiched together, that allow diffused light into the space, and they're also very durable. They do not break easily. So that'll allow natural light into the space. We also have ceiling-mounted lighting, which will provide indirect lighting in the space, so you won't have glare when you are playing ball, and ceiling fans as well to help circulate the air. I'm going to turn it over to, oh, actually, no. I'm going to go back to the Health and Wellness Center and talk to you about the exterior finishes on the Health and Wellness Center for a moment. So here we have that exterior rendering of the Health and Wellness Center. It's sited right off the driveway, right off of Peak Skill Hollow Road, and the Health and Wellness Center is going to match the rest of the campus. We're going to have brick, as well as an aluminum composite panel that'll be insulated up by the cow wall system at the top. So all of these windows are actually that cow wall system, which is an insulated translucent panel. The roof will be a standing seam metal roof in a nice gray, which complements the rest of the campus. And now I'm going to turn it over to Kevin Sawyer to talk about some of our preliminary staging and phasing and logistics.
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. My name is Kevin Sawyer. I'm with Triton Construction. We are your construction managers for this project, and we wanted to talk a little bit tonight about some of our preliminary ideas for logistics during construction, as well as safety. Obviously, safety is our number-one priority, both inside and outside the school, so we wanted to kind of bring you up to speed with some of the ideas that we had that we're developing as part of the plans. The drawing that you see in front of you have a couple of, the areas of the new additions are in blue. So on the top there is the high school, and the bottom there is the middle school. The yellow areas that you see, those boxes, are locations that we're going to use for parking, as well as for site logistics, staging of materials, and various other equipment and things that we're going to need during the course of construction. At the middle school area, you can see that it's a portion of the parking lot out front. It will require us to get creative with the bus loop, and also creative with how we access the loading dock in the back, so we are working on a couple of details. This only shows the outside of the building. There will be considerable logistics that take place inside the building, which will consist of things like partition walls, perhaps other doors for egress, and things of that nature. So as we move forward in the process, we'll share with you guys more of that information in the future. The yellow box at the top there is the area that's behind the baseball field. It is right now currently a grassy area up against the locker rooms. We're proposing to bring a temporary roadway around where the new addition's going to be and attach somewhere around the front entrance of the school district itself. And of course, all these areas will be fenced in with a high fence that will be put into the ground, good and solid, so it deters people from entering those areas and stays up for the duration of the project. So this, like I said, this is sort of some of our preliminary ideas. It's all in development now. We're looking forward to some feedback with some of the administrators as we move forward to make sure that everybody's on board with its final design before it goes out to the bid. Thank you.
And lastly, we're going to touch on constructions, or the schedule for the project. So we're currently in production of the construction documents. We're set to do another estimate to make sure that our budgets are on target. We're anticipating and are on target for submission to the New York State Education Department for permitting in October. That timeline, we'll probably release the drawings, or we should be approved at some point in November. We anticipate bidding over the winter, November to January, with construction to start February of 2020. And we anticipate that construction will stretch into December of 2020. The bulk of that timeline is for the Health and Wellness Center. We are constructing a large addition, so that will go into the school year of 2020. It doesn't really have a lot of impact on how the high school functions. The middle school, as Kevin mentioned, that project has a lot of pieces to it, and the focus is going to be to get that cafeteria. That's going to be the prime focus for the construction on that project. There may be aspects of that project that do run into the 2020 school year, but the main focus is to get that cafeteria as close to operational as we can, if not operational for the 2020 school year. And that concludes our presentation. Are there any questions?
Maybe these are more internal than external questions, but I was looking at the timeline. You're talking about the budget being on target, but this, the bidding is revised more recently because of steel pricing and stuff like that. So the design has been changed from the original poses in the fitness center, the wellness center is smaller than it was originally, correct?
The footprint of the Health and Wellness Center has been reduced because of the estimates that we were getting from the DD set, so we did reduce the size of the Health and Wellness Center, but that does help us because we do have some site constraints that we were contending with as well. So overall, reducing the footprint of the Health and Wellness Center has helped the project overall.
What's the faculty footprint?
The footprint is currently 102 feet by 142 feet, and that's the main volume excluding the storage and the connector vestibule. That main volume is just about 13,500 square feet. The whole addition is not quite 15,000 square feet.
Could you, what's missing from that? What has been taken away?
So, I mean, all we really did was we collapsed it 20 feet. So it's the same width it always was. It's 20 feet shorter, so what that does, by coming in 20 feet, it saves us at least one sort of steel girder going up, which we know is the largest expense of it, but actually, we sort of gained a larger storage area. The other savings are what we're doing by making it 20 feet shorter. We had lots of different options, had to cut some space out of there, where we're sliding it in from where the geothermal wells are, which is certainly a concern. We were going to have to reroute pipes and stuff like that. The other thing, by making it shorter in length, we're pulling it up that hill a little bit by the front entrance, so by pulling it up the hill, we're reducing the amount of like retaining walls. We need to- of retaining walls we need to build there on that front corner. So, it's the same width, it's about 20 feet shorter, but it's still 140 feet long. When we were laying on top of it, it's two full-size basketball courts running across it, to give people sort of a point of reference of how big it is. So, if you think about the gym inside, right inside where the Health and Wellness Center is, it'd be that-sized basketball court, two of those.
Plus space to walk around. So, it fits two full basketball courts plus a perimeter. So, it's, it's still a very large building, even though we took 20 feet off of it.
And then, I guess, as an internal question, what does the current guidance suite turn into in the middle school?
So, in the middle school, by renovating where the nurses' office is and creating those small group instructional rooms, we're displacing other clinical staff members, speech, OT, PT. Those individuals will be going into that existing corner over there.
I guess another question. I know that maybe this didn't fit into the bid whatsoever. That horrible, horrible brown corner of the top of the middle school, is that gonna get changed to green, or painted, or something?
It is going to be painted, and it's actually gonna be painted gray. So, here's the rendering, showing it in a nice, warm gray, which will go nicely with the new windows, which are the champagne color, and the steel on the entry canopy is also going to be a gray, along with a little natural stone on the base of those columns.
That was, that was an easy fix, right?
It was an easy fix. I tried other browns and other colors, and it, it looked a little awkward, and the gray just worked.
And can you go back to the cafeteria commons section?
Yes.
I'm just, I was having a hard time kind of placing it in my head when you showed, you know, from which angle, and which angle, and where things were. Now, the front, that's the, the secondary entrance. That, those glass doors, right?
Correct. So, let me go back to the plan, and I'll orient you a little bit better. Let me see if I can. There we go. So, this is that secondary entrance, which will really serve as kind of the after-school exit, much like the courtyard does now. And after school, if you have an evening activity, this door at the corridor can be locked, and bother, the gymnasium and the social commons can be isolated from the classroom wing of the building. So, the first rendering is if you're standing here, looking out across the social commons.
So, that, that curve there, that is the, that's a glass wall, correct?
This is, it's a framed wall with two pieces of storefront in it. So, they're double doors with side lights and a little transom window across the top. So, you, it's about 10 or 12 feet wide, looking into the, so you can see into those two classrooms, into the learning commons and into the flex maker space. And this is where that walk-draw curtain would be housed, but behind this little pocket, that walk-draw curtain would be stashed. And if there's some reason, whether you want to darken the room, add privacy to the room, whether it's an emergency or not, you can just bring that curtain across.
And that, so that arch, that, then the walkway from the door to the hallway, that's all walkway and not necessarily usable for anything other than walkway, correct? That's not designed for anything usable other than walkway?
Correct. Even when you lay out the, go to the rendering. So, when you lay out the cafeteria, currently, the seating that we're showing here seats 150 students. So, oh, I may have that wrong.
I could just give a point of reference. You see the beam, the posts in the middle? That's the existing cafeteria wall. So, everything from that beam forward towards us is existing courtyard. So, it'll be the existing space plus all of that. Now, the tables in there are just in there for the rendering. You can pick and choose different tables. We can find different configurations to figure out how to maximize the number of students in that space. But the sheer volume of the space is certainly larger when you consider that pillar that you see is the existing wall between the cafeteria and the courtyard.
So, it being a multi-use room, because it's gonna be, it's a theater as well, and a concert, a band, and everything. Where do those tables go when the chairs come out for performances?
Well, I mean, again, the tables on there now are not necessarily ones we're getting, but if they are, those ones fold up, similar ones we have, and they can be wheeled into the hallway or into the gym if you wanted to. The only piece that would stay is we have that built-in bench.
Along that far wall, where the machines are now, or the machines were, sort of machines.
Correct.
Also, from a performance space, I don't think we had touched on it, inside of where the servery is, we're creating sort of a little...
Zone for the AV.
The tech.
For the tech to set up.
Management tech zone, so like, a thing will come down, and then they'll have access to that equipment.
Where the yellow triangles are?
Again, yes, those little red triangles. So, we're doing new AV racks backstage and a new AV rack at the rear, adjacent to the servery. It'll actually be recessed in a panel, so that when you do have performances and you have your control panel, you can have it housed in that little triangle, and it'll be isolated a little bit from the audience.
Remind me again on this, where the, the new band rooms are?
The band rooms?
The practice rooms, the lesson rooms now?
So, the decision, we played...
Or did we lose those?
No, no, we played around with, we had them in different locations. It was actually the band teachers that had requested to stay in their existing spaces. So, we're doing work there. We're doing soundproofing, new doors, new ceilings, other things like that to protect them from both cafeteria from their sound and their sound from the cafeteria. And the other addition is, if you go up from where the band room is, the chorus room, that third room up, which is currently our faculty room, is becoming a separate lesson room. So, that's another space they can utilize for small group lessons. As you know, some of those lessons are taking place on the serving line right now, because we don't have any more space.
Any other questions?
That is fine.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
The main offices?
Yes.
No, the main office, the walls.
Has it been updated? I don't know.
They've actually been updated within the last...
That's...
But at one point, they came out, and didn't know if it was... I think the size of it has changed slightly, because it's sort of fringing up on the other side of where the...
Okay. Second on our hit parade is cheerleading team proposal.
Hi.
Hi.
So, we thought we would come tonight to speak to you about Nationals, answer any questions that you may have. Just to give you a little background, I'm sure you're aware, but we have had a very, very successful four years since cheerleading has become a sport in New York State. In 2016, we won sectional champions, attended the first state tournament. They came in sixth place, missing finals by one place. In 2017, both Ms. Wilson and I joined forces, and we were now the new coaches, and they came in at sectional champions each year. We came in second place 2017, third place 18, and to, last year, we came in second place. And overall, we came in second place out of 65 different teams, losing, I shouldn't say losing to, but coming behind two Long Island teams. And we just feel, at this point, this was a picture of us at states, just to give you an idea of what it looks like, that we just thought it was the next step, a natural progression. Putnam Valley Varsity Cheerleaders have been successful over the last four years. We believe that we need to challenge ourselves to bring them to the next level. I feel like, as academics, we always ask students to challenge themselves, take an AP class, take an honors class. We're asking everybody to take IB classes. Kids that are gonna be out of their comfort zones, kids that are gonna have to really challenge themselves to do well. And we feel like that's where we are right now at cheerleading. We've kind of maxed out in our local areas, and if we don't see what that next level is, we'll never know how to get better. So, performing and competing at this level will help us rise to the next occasion. It will also give them chances to cheer at college. There's a lot of college recruiters there, and we do have a lot of kids that go to Division One colleges for cheerleading. And again, we may attend a competition, we may come in last place. But if we don't see what's out there and see what the real world, you know, the big picture, and the Texas teams and the Florida teams, we'll never be able to get better. Okay. So, in Nationals, you can say you go to Nationals, so many people go to Nationals, but there's really only two real Nationals in the United States, and that's through NCA and UCA. Varsity is the name of the company, varsity.com. They have, like, the monopoly on the cheerleading world. And in, within them, there's many, many, many different divisions. But UCA and NCA are the two, you know, big, big ones, with hundreds and hundreds of teams attending these Nationals. We went to Nationals at Ocean City, Maryland, last a couple of years ago. We competed against three teams, and we won, and we were grand champs in Nationals and wore jackets. But these are ones that you really earn and work hard for. NCA versus UCA, UCA is at Disney World, and a lot of the kids want to go to UCA. It's like, do you want to go to Nationals? You want to go to Disney World, because we could just plan a trip to Disney World. UCA is much harder to get into. You have to do a lot of regional tournaments, and there's one opportunity, a two-minute and 30-second routine, and you could either make it to the next level or not. Where NCA, you can qualify at summer camp, which we already did. We did get a bid to Nationals. We also are guaranteed two performances. You get to do day one and day two, and they combine scores. And they also offer an opportunity for a game day competition, which is only $25 more ahead. So, we can have an opportunity to cheer three times instead of one. So, we thought NCA is better financially for us, and also a better first time out into the national world. We would ask that we leave Thursday evening after school, get down there Thursday night, use Friday for a little sightseeing and practice, and then you have two full-day events on Saturday and Sunday, where you can end at 11 o'clock at night on a Sunday night. So, then we would ask to return on Monday evening, missing two days of school. The costs, right now, as we, even today, I updated this today, from Westchester Airport, there are flights to Dallas for $335. The hotel, in the original proposal I gave you, I estimated at $400, but Ms. Wilson already kind of looked at space and reserved some rooms in the event that we can go, to secure a hotel that is in walking distance to the venue, because North Rockland went one year, and they registered too late, and they had to take buses and public transportation, and we wanted to eliminate that. It's $225 per girl for four nights' stay, and it's a hotel with breakfast included. The entry fee to the competition is $172 a member, and then only 25 extra for game day. And then we estimated about $40 a day for each child to eat, other than breakfast, which comes to a total of $892, if my math is right. And if we do have any additional costs, they are gonna be optional as a team, if our money is there, for sightseeing, and if we wanted to buy extra jackets or clothing. Just, we just had a little fun, because that's what everybody says that we are. But you guys who know me know that I fundraise, and when I do fundraising, we really do, do a good job at it. And you can tell which one's me and which one's her. So, right now, we have $7,600 in our account, which is now with the Putnam Valley Booster Club. And that was after we purchased our own kind of fancy uniforms last year, and did a lot of training and tumbling and choreography. So, we've planned two car washes. We've already had one. We made $400 that time, and we split that with the camp and the this. We are hosting a cupcake festival. I just put that out on social media. You might see that. We're gonna be doing that at Homecoming. We're gonna do two drop-and-shop cheer clinics right around the holiday time. Based on past ones, we've done $500. The football team has donated to us all their breast cancer, breast cancer awareness clothing, and we are going to be selling that at home games. But that money that we earn, half of it, will go to breast cancer. The, we're, the team is walking on October 6th with that. Mr. Burrow has also provided us a bus, so the whole team will be going and doing the breast cancer walk. Gertrude Hawks Chocolate Holidays, last year, we made $1,500. This year, we'd like to do sponsorship t-shirts. We've done that in the past, and we've taken them to Disney World. And we wear those t-shirts throughout our season, listing sponsor names. That has raised $5,000, $6,000 in the past. We've also discussed it with Panis and other local schools, and they say that's their big event. Mo's, Panera Night, Applebee Night. We have a lot of things going on if we want and need them. And then, our Tiger Tournament itself usually averages $8,000 profit every year. Funds needed, our smallest team that would be bringing is 17, our max would be 20, at $892 ahead, approximately $15,000 to $18,000, the two coaches going, because we don't have to pay entrance fees. And if at all possible, we'd love to take our trainer, last year, bringing Ms. Hess to States, was, the last two years was fantastic. She just cares for them. Not only is she medical, she like, just like psychologically helps them, and they just do so much better when she's around. And if that's possible, we would pay for her cost to go. The only thing is, maybe the school would have to cover a sub for her if there was a game. So, we have our minimum and our maximum. With our $7,600, we're approximately $9,000 to $13,000, which I believe is very doable. You know, we always have to worry if there's a blizzard on the day of our tournament, you know, we added that. I didn't write this down, but, you know, we would have meetings with parents as soon as you approve, so they're aware of it, and how much fundraising they have to do. We have enough money to put down deposits and reserve our spaces, and then the family members would be told they may have to put money out of their own pocket with us reimbursing them as the money comes up. And in the end, if we don't have the money that we need completely, we also have Harlem Wizards to fall back on, and we would ask for the Booster Club to help with sponsorship. Here's hotel, would be at the Fairfield Inn and Suites. It includes breakfast. The arena that we would be performing at is the Kay Bailey Marina Arena. They, it is .3 miles from the hotel, so based on Google Maps, it's a six-minute walk, just so that, you know, we do not need to use public transportation or hire buses to get us to and from. And you can see it's also surrounded by lots of hotels. Just so, you know, other local schools that have attended these Nationals over the last couple of years, and I'm sure I've missed a few, but they, like Yorktown goes every year, Mayapack, there's a lot of teams that go. In the past, we weren't, I was never a firm believer in Nationals, to spend all this money, but I feel at this point in time, our girls have earned it and have deserved it, and have really super worked hard to get to the point we're at. And then, I brought a video, if you wanted to see us at States last year. But that's up to you. Should I hit play?
Go for it.
Go for it, if it works. How do you do it, Maureen?
Dan.
Where's the mouse? Oh, that little thing?
There it goes.
Oh. Help me out here.
It won't go.
Help me out, Maureen.
Dan's coming.
Come on, Dan.
And while it's playing, if you want, I can lower it, and you could just add any questions that you may have. One of the biggest things is the faster, and this is not a pressure on you guys, but the faster, thinking nicely, the faster we can pick up flights and hotels. And if you can see, you can see how excited we are at the bottom.
And other teams.
That's North Rockland cheering along with us. Where the two blue arms jumping up and down, like this in between.
Where the two blue arms jumping up and down, like this in between.
Virginia, I just want to confirm, the only funding you're asking from the school is for transportation to from the airport in New York?
Yes.
That's the only funding that you're requesting?
Our hopes is to be out of Westchester or Stewart. Worst case, we'd have to be LaGuardia. But I think we provide, you know, good transportation to that. And if Ms. Hess can come with us, if there needs to be a sub for her at a game.
And transportation in Dallas is covered?
Yes, the hotel provides the, and the company provides the pickup at the airport, and that hotel specifically is in walking distance to everything we need. And then again, if we have an abundance of funds, then we might do a private bus to go someplace, maybe go see chicken. What's that each?
Oh, wake up.
Which a lot of parents do. But, you know, I am confident, like, we pay for a lot of things out of pocket with tumbling classes and choreography, and we've always raised funds for it. And for those who know me with my class, like, if we have a goal, we make it. If I have to do it myself, we do it. I personally would help sponsor a child or two if they can't do it. And I know the question was asked, what if we have, we don't raise enough and there's kids that can't afford it? We'll figure it out. And I know that this family, there are two parents already who've offered to us. And we do two, I do fundraising, or we do two fundraising in two ways. We do group efforts and then we do some individuals. So when we do the candy sales, those kids, just say a kid sells $300 worth, I take 10% off of that topic, goes to the general fund, and then that person individually gets money. So that someone who's working super hard and selling doesn't have to give it to somebody that's not. But the majority of our stuff is group fundraising, but they, I do one or two individuals. Like for the sponsorships, if they go out and get sponsorships, a portion of that will get credited to them. I even had some money from last year. One girl had money, she did so well, she had money, she had to pay for camps at summer either. She kept every, she just did so much. Do you have any other questions?
So I just want to recognize the amount of work that goes into not just planning this, but obviously what you see here. And I know that these two ladies and all of our students involved in cheerleading put a tremendous amount of work and effort. This is truly a year-round thing for them. They're going to summer camps, they're running clinics for community members all the time. They're always in this building, so it's beyond the competition seasons, but they're certainly always together. So I certainly endorse this, and I'm very anxious to see how well they do down there. So, thank you.
Are we going to have to formally approve it with a motion? Or just all just agree to it?
Maybe if you agree with it, to it now, I'm going to do the formal motion at the next meeting, if you're ca- if you wanted to attend.
It would be okay with me to go forward?
Absolutely. I think it's a great challenge and opportunity since, and also the financial exposure to the district is minimal, so.
Well, do you want to add a motion tonight, or do you want to wait till the end of the month to formalize it? We can formalize it tonight.
Yeah, we.
Our motion is just to approve it and supply transportation to the airport.
Yeah, I mean, so I mean, right, there is a policy, we just, that we review it, so I don't know that we.
You just approve overnight trips?
Yeah. So, I mean, that's, I have no issue with making it official, if you want to make it official. And I think us making it official is by saying, yeah, it's a good idea, is what you need.
Right. Why don't we make it official? If you're going to get a verbal okay now, that's what you guys need to move ahead.
We'd appreciate it, just so.
And then we can do the official resolution, there's a form that you can fill out.
And then we get the board approval.
And then we'll officially make it official next board meeting.
Okay.
Officially official. But in the meantime, it sounds like you certainly have everyone's endorsement, so.
Yeah.
Best of luck.
Thank you very much.
All right. Yeah. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. So this is my combination presentation and update for today. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our opening of schools, and then a little bit about our development for our district goal. Goal being singular is purposeful. So, in the beginning of our superintendent's conference day, it's opening of the school year, we certainly recognized our number of new staff members. Now, I want to emphasize it's new staff members, not necessarily all new teachers, but we wanted to make sure to recognize teaching assistants, new members of transportation, clerical staff. Mr. Rowe in the middle is not new, he's not coming back. He doesn't like to turn down opportunities for photos, though. He's actually about to board the bus and take them all on their tour of Putnam Valley. So I thought it was a great picture, just recognizing our new staff members this year. From there, we talked a little bit about the tremendous amount of work that goes on in Putnam Valley over the summer. So whether it be our Kinder Camp or ESY program, the miraculous work our buildings and ground staff does both in the buildings and outside. The picture on the upper right captures sort of a piece of the wellness trail. And obviously, throughout the summer, we have teachers in participating in curriculum writing and other professional development opportunities. So during that initial superintendent's conference day, we sort of broke it up into three different pieces. The first was our district-wide gathering, sort of the, one of the three possible opportunities we have to get together as an entire district at the high school pack. So we decided to, it's a little hard to get people's attention the first day back to work after a summer vacation. So we got their attention by marching, by having a marching band walk into the pack, so the, that upper right-hand side. So no matter how inspirational my speech was afterwards, everybody remembered the marching band. And then what we did is we, we've done this several times. We take our entire district and we split them up into vertical groups across disciplines and across roles. So we have teachers and teaching assistants and aides, monitors, and clerical staff, and everyone gets sort of randomly assigned into a group. And we've done a variety of activities. This year, we did something new and exciting, and that I have a feeling will continue. We had them participate in a scavenger hunt. So we came up with clues, all Putnam Valley oriented, and had them essentially running around this entire campus, researching, taking pictures. It was really meant to be a team-building activity. Many of these individuals don't know each other. If they're not in the same buildings, they have very little exposure to each other. I was a little hesitant, I wasn't sure if people were really going to buy in. About 30 seconds in, there was people running down the main hallway of the high school. So that let me know that there was so, a full buy-in. We were actually tracking live on a computer as they were submitting answers. It was pretty exciting. Competitiveness is, does not run short in Putnam Valley. And then in the afternoon, we did was teacher-facilitated workshops. And this, again, is something we've done several times. Before the end of last school year, we asked teachers to complete a survey of what are topics that they would like to learn about. We used feedback from that survey to create a list of potential workshop topics, and then we asked them to prioritize which of those workshops they would be most interested in. So after completing that, over the summer, we tabulated their responses, and we scheduled every teacher into two of their top three workshops. Now, the only way this can happen is by having our own teachers facilitate it. We're running up to 10 simultaneous workshops, so teachers have to step up and facilitate those. And we had no problem of getting enough teachers together to facilitate these workshops for their colleagues. It's extremely successful and something that will certainly continue. On the second day, we gave our building principals sort of the opportunity to work with their staff, so there was building meetings. And then in the afternoon, each of the buildings was provided professional time. The middle school did their traditional trip to the challenge course at P&amp;W Bosse's before returning for some professional work. I came across this, this is actually a saying from the Navy SEALs over the summer, and I thought it really captured how I felt at the time. Says, "Being comfortable, being uncomfortable, be comfortable being uncomfortable, and you'll be able to handle any situation that comes your way." So I figured if it was good enough for the Navy SEALs, it should be good enough for me. And that really became sort of what our focus was for that first day, and really for the year. This whole concept of challenge and the belief that growth only occurs within a state of disruption. Yes, that's my cute seven-year-old there flexing. So, last time we had vertical groups in the spring, we asked teachers and teaching assistants and everyone to come up with what our core values were in Putnam Valley. Came up with a long list, and that list was shared with parents and students. So these two graphics on the page now are, show the responses that we captured from almost 400 parent, oh, sorry, almost 400 student responses and almost 100 parent responses in terms of what their priorities were in terms of core values. Now, if you're not familiar with this type of word art, the lot, the larger the word is displayed, the more number, the larger the number of individuals prioritize that. So, we use this as sort of a jumping-off point for our development of our district goal for this year. During our administrative retreat, board members joined us, and we went through a series of exercises and ultimately came up with what will be our goal for this year. And that goal reads, "Promote wellness and personal growth by accepting challenges." Now, the reason why we have a goal and not 27 pages of goals is truly the belief that a universal goal allows us to work collectively in the same direction. But it doesn't downplay the fact that individuals, departments, buildings will still have their own individual goals and do things to better themselves, but everything we do, we should be able to connect back to that one universal goal. So, as a way to capture all of those other things that we're going to do anyway, we decided the mission statement was a good way to align all of our work. So this is the narrative piece. Underneath this, it breaks down sort of skills that every student will be. So this is going to be the guideline, the alignment that we'll use when each of the buildings, departments, and individuals enter. What are those things that they'll do this year to help ensure that students are lifelong learners, to help ensure that students are respectful and responsible citizens? So, under the theme of alignment, we thought it was important to just, to pick something that everyone believes in, and that was our district mission statement. So an alignment of focus will allow us to have a more profound impact on student learning. So the universal goal creates that alignment. Using our mission statement as the framework for our action items also helps ensure that alignment. Now, there's certainly many other people I wanted to quickly recognize for the work over the summer, as well as the opening of school. I touched on buildings and grounds. Being in this building, or all buildings throughout the summer, you'd be amazed at what they look like. Two weeks before school opens, wires are hanging from the ceiling, stuff's all over the hallway. I think they sleep here for the last two weeks, but somehow, when that school opens, the floors are glistening and everything is spotless. Our grounds guys undertook the creation of a wellness trail that I was told would be done in a week, and then it was two weeks, then it was this Friday, then it was next Friday. I figured eventually it would be done on a Friday. But they were out there all summer in the heat, working relentless to get it done, and now it's beautiful. I do want to acknowledge our transportation. We did a lot of work throughout last year with our transportation company. We met with them over the summer. We wanted to make sure that we did not run into the same issues during the opening of school that we ran until last year. And I just wanted to acknowledge that so far, things have been running pretty smooth, and we hope they stay that way. Obviously, faculty and staff were in throughout the summer, participating in learning opportunities. Our administration does a tremendous job of keeping everything going over the summer, participating in their own professional development, leading professional development, and making sure that everything is perfect for when students and staff return in the fall. Food services, we met with them throughout the summer. I know that we had a terrific opening, especially at the high school, the community lunch. Again, none of the issues we experienced early last year resurfaced again this year. Our technology staff, often unsung heroes, are here all summer. Matt Brady's usually climbing around on the ceiling somewhere, but they're running wires, they're updating machines, and they're making our, our buildings safer and our infrastructure better. And then obviously, our clerical staff are really the ones that hold everything together and make this all possible. And that's it. Any questions?
I have a micro question about new high school drop-off pattern, how that's going.
Yeah, it's been great, I have to say, even though I didn't come up with it. And I did come up with last year's. You know, it's been great. Dave Spittle really deserves the credit for, really, what was a simple swap of the two lanes. It's certainly safer. Dave or Deputy Murray don't have to dive in front of buses to save students who are crossing without looking. So it's certainly alleviated that. I've been here at varying times in the morning, sort of checking on the traffic, and it's, day one was better than day 14 last year. So I think it'll continue to get better. Our buses will get, routes will get tighter, they'll get here a little bit earlier. People are sort of self-governing their drop-off when they should be here and when they shouldn't, but it was drastic improvement from last year, and I expect it only to get better, just in time for us to start all over again for our drop-off and pickup during the construction phase. That'll be time for a new plan again.
So the other question I have, as far as the singular goal, how is that, because I'm assuming the singular goal was completed after or before the, the staff came back? And are they, and how are they going to become aware of this and how it will impact them as they try and reach their personal goals throughout the year?
Uh huh. So we shared this, I did it as part of my presentation before the entire staff on the superintendent's conference day. We talked certainly in more detail than I shared tonight, how we arrived at this, what it meant. I asked that, they all sort of took opportunities to reflect on challenges they've experienced in their lives and, and how they've grown from them, and if that growth would have occurred without that challenge. And then I made myself vulnerable, and I shared my own before everyone to sort of give it a real-life feel of like, well, this is what's happened in my life, and there's certainly been struggles and challenges, but many of those things have made me who I am today. And I think that's a story that everyone relates with, and the feedback from the teachers was really positive. I think people felt sort of inspired, people felt as if you're almost speaking to them because it's something that everyone lives, and I think it's something that's important. The wellness piece, I think, is important. Challenge by itself is we can sit here and tell people to do, 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 but we have to be there also to hold their hand and lift them up and support them when they fall, to make sure that they're successful.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Now we go into our newly titled presentation administrator's report, and this is Jill Figaro.
It was for you.
You thought it was something else. Go behind the camera.
Dave or Deputy Murray don't have to dive in front of buses to save students who are crossing without looking. So it's certainly alleviated that. I've been here at varying times in the morning, sort of checking on the traffic, and it's day one was better than day 14 last year. So I think it'll continue to get better. Our buses will get, routes will get tighter, they'll get here a little bit earlier. People are sort of self-governing their drop-off when they should be here and when they shouldn't, but it was drastic improvement from last year, and I expect it only to get better, just in time for us to start all over again for our drop-off and pickup during the construction phase. That'll be time for a new plan again.
So the other question I have, as far as the singular goal, how is that, because I'm assuming the singular goal was completed after or before the staff came back, and are they, how are they going to become aware of this and how it will impact them as they try and reach their personal goals throughout the year?
So we shared this. I did it as part of my presentation before the entire staff on the superintendent's conference day. We talked certainly in more detail than I shared tonight, how we arrived at this, what it meant. I asked that they all sort of took opportunities to reflect on challenges they've experienced in their lives and how they've grown from them, and if that growth would have occurred without that challenge. And then I made myself vulnerable, and I shared my own before everyone to sort of give it a real-life feel of like, well, this is what's happened in my life, and there's certainly been struggles and challenges, but many of those things have made me who I am today. And I think that's a story that everyone relates with, and the feedback from the teachers was really positive. I think people felt sort of inspired, people felt as if you're almost speaking to them because it's something that everyone lives, and I think it's something that's important. The wellness piece, I think, is important. Challenge by itself is we can sit here and tell people to do, 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 but we have to be there also to hold their hand and lift them up and support them when they fall to make sure that they're successful.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Now we go into our newly titled presentation, Administrator Support, and this is Jill Figaro. It was for you. You thought it was something else. Go behind the camera.
Oh, you don't? Okay. Hey, Dan, can I borrow you for a second?
One goal, you kidding?
Sorry.
It's fine. We'll clean it up in post.
That's not how it works.
Okay, so I had originally come, wanted to come up tonight and talk about the star exemption, the senior star exemption, emphasize what the changes are. But unfortunately, what has taken the forefront of my, of my presentation tonight is the recall of our school tax bills in all of Putnam County. So Putnam Valley is not the only town that's affected, it's all of the towns and all of the school districts within Putnam County, all of the residents within Putnam County. So even those that attend schools in Westchester or Duchess are affected if they live in Putnam County. Again, the school tax bills were recalled, so I'm going to start off with showing you this press release, which I don't, Dan, can we make it larger or no? Anyway, we were notified at about eight days after we had released the school tax bills that by the Commissioner of Finance in Putnam County, that there was an error and a problem with the school tax bills that were issued. The process for us has to start all over again. For those, you know, who have, people already started paying their bills. We were into it eight days already. We had them all out. We've gone through the whole process that we normally go through. So for those, what's going to happen is, again, we're going to start all over again. For those who have not paid their original bill, the new bills will be issued. For those who have paid, they will either receive a supplemental bill or a refund. And unfortunately, we'll have to explain to those who were billed less than they were supposed to be billed, how much they owe. The people that are going to owe extra amount are veterans because the veterans exemption is what was wrong with the original bills. The exemption file that was loaded by Putnam County was incorrect. It gave veterans a larger exemption than they were supposed to get by a great deal of, a greater amount of money. They all paid a much lesser amount if they had already paid their bills, so now they're going to owe money. The amount of those who should have higher bills are, like I said, the residents with the vets exemption. For the most part, the majority of people who paid are people that are going to get a refund from us. We have to refund everyone individually. It's about, right now, I think it's 193 refunds that we have to make, individual refunds, whether it's 50 cents or $50. We have to make it right. We can't take in any additional tax revenue than we are allowed to take in. So the new bills are going to be mailed out on yellow paper. We started the process today. They're all printed, and they are in the process of being stuffed and remailed. They're in an envelope that states revised tax bill enclosed in red ink. So I had, it's interesting because I had called, a gentleman came in to pay last week, and he told the person at our front desk that he was going away for the month and that he was coming in to pay because he wanted to make sure he did the right thing and paid before he left. Well, he's one of the people that are going to end up getting a refund, but we couldn't deposit his check because his check didn't match up with the, with the, with the new bill. So we returned his check to him, and I tried to track him down the other day. And when I called him on the phone, he thought I was, thought I was scamming him, and I know, he said to me, he was, he hung up on me the first time, and then he said, "When I get it back in the mail, I'll deal with it then." And he was very, you know, he put, he put me off totally because he thought I was, I was scamming him on the phone about it, and his wife was yelling at him in the background. So there's going to be quite a lot of bedlam. We tried to call him back again, and no one got in touch with him. We're going to keep attempting. He's somebody that's lived here for a very long time, and I can understand. I mean, all in the news, that's all everyone is hearing, is the IRS is going to call you, it's a scam, and this and that. So I was trying to tell him that, you know, he paid the wrong amount, he didn't want to have anything to do with me. So we'll see what happens next with him, but I have a feeling that that's going to happen again. So again, the new bills will be coming out, they're on yellow paper, so that will tell us that the person is paying the right bill because we're going to have people that still have the old bill. And I think just by nature, people open the bill, they leave it on their kitchen table, they're going to pay that one, they don't even bother opening the next envelope that comes in, except we did try to identify it with the words on the front of it that it's revised. The county has just told the school districts to deal with it individually and try to get the word out on their own. They aren't really providing any kind of calling to residents or anything like that. We're on our own in letting people know. The people that we can reach out to are only the people that come to the school district, only parents. Those are the people. I think Mr. Oliverio was able to reach out through an email of, I don't know what you would call it, I guess, like a, he has a, he has an email bank of people that he reaches out to in the town, and he was able to send it out to them. So it is more than just the families that were reached out to, but not, not as many as we would have liked to. So there will be new due dates. The 9/15 date, which is the partial payment date, has now been moved to 10/7. So October 7th is the new partial payment date, with the second half still due in March, on March 15th. The 9/30 date, which is the normal full payment without penalty date, will now be 10/21. So October 21st is now the full payment date without penalty. 10/22 through 10/31, which is our, the late penalty, the late payment, late full payment with 2% penalty. So that remains the same. It will end on October 31st. We are still required to turn all of the tax dollars over to the county, I mean, the remaining open tax bill reports and everything to the county on November 1st. That date did not change. So we still have to do what we have to do by November 1st. Again, the replacement bills were mailed out on yellow paper. I'm trying to get the word out to as many people as we can. We did send information to the library, to the senior center. I made some phone calls over there. They announced it at their, you know, their lunchtime over at the senior center, so people would get the information and talk about it. So again, if you've paid your bill and you did not have an exemption, you will most likely be due a refund. The timeliness of the refunds right now is unknown, but we'll process them, you know, as timely as we can. We'll try to address the people who paid first, et cetera, to get their refund first. And I also think people are getting their star refund in the mail, who applied for it with New York State, so you should see those checks coming in. And those who paid less than they were supposed to will get a notification that they owe an additional amount with a new due date. If nothing at all has been paid, then you would be paying the bill as outlined in the new yellow bill that you're revise, that you're getting that's revised, and you'll submit it in the normal fashion. They can be paid online. Once you get them, all of the online payment options will be available. So you can go to the website, you can go to, you can return it in the addressed, the pre-addressed envelope to our lockbox, or we are at the district office if necessary and you need to stop in to pay. That's fine. If you have sent your check and it has not been cashed, you may be receiving it back in the mail within the next five to seven days. This means that your tax bill is not paid, and you'll be receiving a new tax bill with a letter on the yellow paper. I don't know if anybody has any other additional questions or something that I didn't cover, but it's, it's about getting the word out to people. There's just people who are just not going to know about it, and we're going to have to deal with them on a one-to-one basis.
So the, are the online options currently shut off?
The online options will be shut off. I believe they'll be back on tomorrow if everything goes as planned. If not, by the weekend, yes, they're off. They were turned off immediately on Monday morning. By Monday afternoon, we had our banking, you know, our lockbox notified at Chase that they wouldn't be taking payments from anybody. And again, we have returned, there was a, so there were, there was stuff in the mail, right? There were people who had mailed things out, we received them in, now we're still receiving them, and we're returning them, and with the letter saying what, you know, that they have to pay on the new bill.
What about the, the people who work through escrow and their mortgage company?
Right, okay. So the escrow accounts, which are about 1,500 of our 4,500 bills, the people who have escrow accounts with their banks, they will be notified as, from the county, they will be notified, most of them, okay? They're from large tax service organizations. Most of those banks work through large tax service organizations. They were notified by Putnam County that, and those are only the banks that pay through those organizations. We do have smaller banks, like Tompkins Bank, Ulster Savings Bank, to name, you know, just to name a couple of them.
Pre-plugged.
TD Bank. I mean, they, they will send individual listings and request bills from us. Those all have to be sent out over again. So as, they normally don't pay till, towards the end of the month, so we don't have the same problem with them yet, but they do trickle in, and there are people who are closing, who have called for information, that were given wrong information. So there's a lot of mail to deal with.
I guess another question, the delay in getting the appropriate taxes, does that do anything financially to cash flow, et cetera, or not really?
Not significantly. We didn't collect, in other words, between September 9th, we don't know what the impact is yet. When I see what date we actually start getting money back in again, then I'll know what the difference is between what we collected last year at this time and, you know, and so forth. The county is reimbursing us any additional expenses it is costing us for our software, our printing, envelopes, extra paper, personnel. We're trying to get the personnel expenses back from them. All school districts are in the same, so, you know, I think they're going to take another look at it as far as if we needed to have someone come in for extra help and the time it's, I mean, we've had to put everything else aside that we are doing to, to get this accomplished. And I have to thank everybody in the business office, in the technology department, in our webmaster. Jeannie Dennehy has been outstanding, getting the communication out to the families and wherever she could, you know, just helping to figure out how we were going to make this work. And so all of, everyone has, you know, our business office personnel, the tax collector who has to, you know, go through the processing all over again, you know, start it all over again. It's been, it's been one big headache. So, you know, again, because the process had already begun, it complicates the whole thing. You know, as the, as somebody who pays taxes, of course, where I live, I understand the anxious feeling that people are feeling, the taxpayers are feeling, but I just want them to know that we're all experiencing this challenge. It isn't just, you know, it's unfortunate for them that they have to take a double look and figure out, are they paying the right thing? Who, you know, did their bank pay the right thing? But it's very difficult for us too on our end.
And it's not, and it's not been on the news at all.
No.
I mean, not Channel 12, not local.
No, we've asked, we've asked the county to put it on W H U D. I don't want to, I don't want to keep on saying it, but I mean, they, they don't want to go there. They don't want to go there, they're leaving it up to us to communicate it.
But then, but then it's the confusion of people who think that it's a scam because, because that's what they hear.
Right, because, you know, we can't even, even if you did a robo-call, they'd think it was a scam.
Right, right.
So.
And way too worse.
Even worse. One of the things I was thinking of, I don't know if you described what it's going to look like, I don't know that I've seen it. If we can have a redacted image of what the outer envelope will look like, what the tax bill will look like.
Yeah, maybe we could post an image of it up on the website.
Put it on Facebook and send it to our email. Maybe even connect with the library and the senior center to have copies of what this will look like to keep an eye out for this piece of paper.
So I can say that it is the same bill, but it's on yellow paper. But again, I'll have pictures of it up on the website, or we can send it to those places to they can, so they can see and what the envelope looks like, because yes, people are going to think they already got it, and they're just going to pay off the original one is what, so that's my fear, is that we're still going to be dealing with this right until the bitter end, so.
Until we start our budget, right. Right.
So, so, you know, it affected the star. It did, when they recalculated everything and they added the exempted amounts of money back into the calculation for the rate, the rate came down 30 cents per thousand, so I can say that I'm happy about that. So the rate got reduced, but the star also got reduced, so it, and I can tell you, because I know a resident who's already received their star refund, that the star refund was based on the original rate that was set, not the, not the changed rate.
So you had to readjust the star refund?
I don't have to do anything as far as I know. I think what's going to happen to that, and I haven't gotten confirmation, is the New York City Department of Taxation issued those checks. I believe they will take care of it through income tax, because that is linked directly to your income tax. Your income is the, are the, are the people who applied for that, the check.
It's going to be a hard dotted line.
But you'll also be receiving your tax credit check, which is as a result of our staying under the tax cap with our budget. So that's another check that'll be coming.
But for the, for the veterans, people that had the veterans exemption.
Yep.
Is the, the star money that was taken off, like my bill.
The credit, yeah.
Was based on the old number?
Yes.
So now with the new number, it will be a different?
Well, on the credit on your bill, it's no problem, because we're changing that credit amount.
Oh.
But if you're, if you got the check in the mail, that's where the difference comes in. And I believe the basic one is $12.30 more than it should be. The other one, I haven't seen anybody's yet, so I can't tell you what they're giving them. Okay, so what I really wanted to talk about tonight was the star savings and the enhanced star exemption, because this is the year that the state had decided anybody who was getting the enhanced star had an app, had a, you know, the application deadline for enhanced star was March 1st for everybody. It always is every year for enhanced. The app, some, some seniors did not fill out the application properly. Some of them had trouble filling it out, it wasn't acting the way that it should be online, or maybe they were putting in wrong information. They're giving senior citizens a second chance, and they're calling it the application deadline due to good cause. And they're giving everyone until September 30th, who's a senior, getting the senior enhanced star exemption, to apply for it if they haven't. I can tell you, as of August 23rd, out of 649,000 seniors across the state, I think there was 15,000 senior citizens who had not applied for it online. It's called IVP. It's the Income Verification Program. And all seniors, if they want to receive the star, have to apply for it online by September 30th, or they won't get it. And again, they're going to approve people based on good cause, whatever the reason is that they give, I guess they're going to take it into consideration. If they're not on the program by the end of the September, you're not going to get the, you're not going to get the exemption unless they've already given it to you on your bill because you went in and filled out the application in March. Next year, you will not be renewed. The people who did the application will automatically be renewed, do not have to do an income verification, but they all already be on the program because they will be able to link it to their income tax, and that's how they'll get their exemption. Again, we just got this information September 1st, which was the date when we've already, like, sent out our bills, so we're supposed to be telling everyone. So this was the main reason for talking about this tonight. Now, to make matters worse for people in Putnam County, we have this other issue with the tax bills. So I just want to, again, try to spread the word about the seniors who didn't enroll. So I just want to, again, try to spread the word about the seniors who didn't enroll. The assessors were notified of all of the people in our town who did not apply for this sometime late August. And they were supposed to reach out to those seniors and try to help them through the process, because there are people who can't do it themselves. It is an online application, so it's not something that everybody has access to. Trying to think if there's any more information. All I can say, there is a hotline number that people can call, I have this up on our website as well, because not everybody has a computer. They can call the phone number and get some more information, ask as many questions as they want to. The phone number is in Albany. It's at the Office of Real Property Tax Service. And the number is five one eight four five seven two zero three six. About, any questions that you have about the STAR program, specifically the enhanced STAR program? And I'll have the information on our website that people can get. I don't know if anybody else has any questions about anything that I talked about. It's a lot of information, and other than sharing it with you tonight at the board meeting and trying to get paper information, we're putting, in the new bills that we're mailing out, we're putting all this information as well, even about the, the enhanced STAR, so that, I just hope everybody reads the entire message, because it's a lot of information coming to them all in one.
Anything else?
Anybody have any more questions? You could think of anything else to ask.
Thanks, Jill. And thank you for, to the whole team for dealing with this.
Yeah, thank you.
Unforced error.
And now we are moving on to discussing policy revisions.
Is that you, Natalie? Is that you?
Yes. Do you want me to go up to the podium or just stay here?
Go wherever you want.
So I'm going to stay here.
Okay.
It's easier, because I have some stuff on my computer that I need to pull up at times. So the first policy, they're both required policy. The first one is regarding homeless children and children, what we call in any kind of homeless or transition, a homeless student or student in transition looking for placement in a, in either a shelter or possibly a motel. So the McKinney-Vento Act is an act that was brought forward a number of years ago, and we follow, basically, we follow the regulations. We have, last year, we reported twelve students as students that were, met the criteria under the McKinney-Vento Act as being homeless. And again, homeless sort of has this derogatory feel, and it, and it is, it's a pretty horrible situation for a student. The definition of homeless for, for a child is, that has, it is, "A child who lacks a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence, or who has a primary nighttime location in a public or private shelter designed to provide temporary living accommodations, or a place not designated for or ordinarily used as a regular sleeping accommodation for human beings." This includes housing of others that, due to a loss of housing, economic hardship, similar, or similar reason, living in motels, hotels, trailer parks, camping grounds. Sometimes students are even doubled up with other family members because they've lost their adequate or fixed housing. So doubling up is often what we see here in Putnam Valley, where students will move in, and their parents will move in with a fa, a local family member. So that is our largest that we see is, out of students who qualify under McKinney-Vento, is a doubling up situation. Again, we had twelve last year. These are students who were identified by me or by Valerie Alimon, who is our registrar, who sort of flags it. We, we give students, when they're registering, a questionnaire to answer, and certain red flags are on that form for us, and she brings that to my attention. I then meet with the family, or we have a psychologist or a social worker meet with the family. We then register the child under the McKinney-Vento Act. So this is really a, a standard policy, it's required. It was updated to meet ESSA regulations. Earlier today, I know that Janine Rufo, who couldn't be here tonight, sent an email saying that she was concerned about some of the language in one of them. So the language that she was concerned about, and that I'll discuss right now, is, it's about the student, the, the school of origin, school of attendance, last attendance, and school district of current location. So it's confusing, because, and I'm just going to use an example about Jane Doe. So say Jane Doe has lived in our district in Putnam Valley her entire life, and Jane Doe's family, their house goes into foreclosure, and they have to move into a motel in Yonkers, temporarily while they're looking for something else, or they're placed there by social services. That's where the district of origin in that situation. In, in the ESSA definition, New York State has definitions of district of origin, school of attendance, they all kind of mean the same thing. So I'm just going to read this note to you, that is sort of a caveat to what NISBA, which is the New York State School Boards Association, which is where we, we get a lot of our policies from. So they put this in there, that they also bring this to our attention, that ESSA uses the term, quote, "school of origin," while New York State law and regulation uses the term "district of origin" and "district of current location," as well as "school of origin." There is no difference in the end, i.e., that homeless children may attend either the school they attended when they became homeless, or the school they last attended, or the school they may attend due to their current location. So the, the school, the school that of, that they became homeless in is the last district that they were reg, tuition, allowed to attend tuition-free. So in Jane Doe's case, that would have been us. So Jane Doe could have chosen the district to remain with us, the district of origin. We are required by law to transport children up to fifty miles, and we have done that. We have had students in, that were placed in Poughkeepsie in a shelter. We've had children placed in different, different settings, and they have chosen to stay with us. And the reason and the intent behind the regulation and the law is that school is often the one fixed place that children have. So the law and the intention of the law is good. The adults sometimes have to, you know, figure out how to transport a child, and I have to give kudos to Mike and Lori. There has never been a time when I have called them and said, "Listen, we have a child who became homeless, they've been placed X place, okay, we'll figure it out." And either they'll call, I'll call. So we, we figure those adult things out, so that children can have, you know, one fixed thing in, in their life, and that is usually school, until it's worked out. The law also requires us to, on a yearly basis, on an annual basis, do follow-up with the family, make sure where they're living, whether, if they've moved, if their housing has changed and became fixed, regular, and adequate. So that's really the definition. Again, most of our students here are doubled up with a family, but, but there are times when, when they are placed into shelters and, or live with other family members, doubled up in a different district, and we're still the district of last attendance or origin. So we can certainly work on that language, and then there'll be a second reading, and we can clarify that language a little bit more, so. But, but they are really, they all mean the same thing. So NISBA was saying that, basically, they're going with ESSA's language with the federal law versus the state law, but they are all the same thing. But we can certainly discuss that, whether we want to put in New York State's definitions in there, or leave it with ESSA's language, knowing what it means. The one sentence where she was talking about is, it, it says, "A homeless child or youth has the right to attend his or her school of origin, or any school that permanently, that permanently housed students who live in the attendance area in which the homeless student is actually living, are eligible to attend." It is a confusing sentence, and it, it certainly needs to be cleaned up. So I can change some of that wording and use New York's definition, which I do think is clearer about the district of origin or the district of last attendance. So, so we can change that, and we'll post it during the next meeting.
So upon this annual review that has to happen, right?
Yes.
If they, if the student is considered no longer homeless, but not, no longer in our district, I'm assuming then that becomes a different situation?
Mm-hmm. They're allowed to finish the school year in, that, that school year, and then they move to the district of their fixed adequate residence. And another caveat, really, this has to do with funding. So as the district of origin, if they choose to go to Yonkers and not Putnam Valley, because they're trying to look for housing there and it makes more sense, or whatever the reason is, Yonkers would bill us for the tuition, for their tuition.
For the remainder of that year.
For the remainder of that year. And conversely, if one of our students, you know, becomes homeless and, you know, somewhere else, and that child attends there, we, we would be able to bill for transportation or to or from. So it's about funding, most of the time, it's about funding. It doesn't, if a child becomes homeless in New Jersey and moves here, we might register them under McKinney-Vento, but there's nobody to bill, because it doesn't cross state lines. Any other questions?
I guess my question is on the specifics here. The, the approval of the first reading, does the document need not to be complete before we accept a first reading, and that way the document is complete for two?
Correct. Next time, we'll put it up as another first reading.
Okay, so that we would not adopt this as, we would not resolve?
Right, Guy?
That's correct. There's no reason to vote on it today.
Okay.
Exactly.
Especially since there's lots of placeholders in here, as far as the list, the activities.
And next time, if we really wanted to, we could, we could waive the second reading and just approve it, period, if we're satisfied with publicly.
Because there's lots of work to do with the specific actions and all those lists. I'm assuming that that's all going to be filled in, all those dark, bold, italic pieces.
Which ones?
Especially on the second policy.
On the parent and family engagement?
The second policy, correct. That, it's up for discussion on what we want to include in those bullets. Jeremy were going, and I went through them. We're going to share them with you tonight, and our ideas about what to include, and then we'll put it in the document, put it up for a first reading next time, and then that'll be the first reading, and then a second reading if you want.
Okay. Any other questions?
Janine, we were just talking about, thank you for joining us. We were just talking about district of origin, and this, I talked about, the language that New York State uses is a little bit different, and S, and New York State School Boards Association discusses and put in a caveat, which I sent a little while ago, just really talking about that they're, they've chosen to go with the language that's closer aligned to ESSA regulation, so it's federal regulation versus state, but we can certainly change the, the language to include New York State language more, either one.
And in the part where they have to, parents have to be informed in, well, I mean, you want parents to be informed, I guess all of this available in another language if they don't?
It is. We have it in several languages. Also for ours, you know, when we have a student that, or a family that fills out a questionnaire that raises red flags for us, we have so many resources, we have like a whole packet of resources for them. We, they, again, we, there's a whole process that we go through. Today, we had a family register who weren't, not today, whenever, it was within the past few weeks, register, and really, we went through dental, medical, had a transition for housing, local resources, all of those things. So again, I think that it's a, it's a really important law that, that New York, I think, did a great job at, you know, having school districts really work together on transportation, on making sure that it made sense for where the student stayed in attendance at school for the, for the transition time, when their families are looking for permanent housing.
Natalie, the, I don't remember off the top of my head the details on the free and reduced lunch form. Is that an item that's used as a kind of, to identify folks that might be in, in particular stress for homelessness?
It, I think it's certainly one area that we look at. I don't know if it's necessarily tied with homelessness. It's certainly, if you qualify for McKinney-Vento, is usually through a registration process, or somehow a change of address is triggered for a student, and that is what our red flag is. And, and then when we interview the family, or meet with the family, and, and figure out why they're living X place, it usually comes up, that's usually how it's triggered, a McKinney-Vento interview. But they automatically qualify for free and reduced lunch.
I was just going to say, they almost don't even have to submit a form.
Exactly.
Well, I'm just saying, that might, I'm just thinking along the lines of, somebody might not know that they need to do something about it, but they might get this form, and then that might be something that, you know, is a flag.
It's usually a change of address. If they're living here and then become homeless, is what usually is our red flag. But at, during the registration process, if they're identified as McKinney-Vento, they automatically go on our free and reduced lunch, but, mm-hmm. Any other questions at this point?
Thanks, Natalie.
Okay. And then the next policy is the family engagement policy. It is a required policy. Jeremy and I and Jeanette actually went through the policy and sort of highlighted some things we wanted to discuss tonight, wanted to talk about and identify some of the things that we, we thought could be changed and added. So the parent and family engagement on the first page there, it says it may take place in either the classroom during extracurricular activities, and then it goes into however the board also encourages parent-family engagement at home. And in there, all of that is fine, except the contracts part, we sort of had an issue with, like, you know, homework contracts with parents. We just think that, one, it hasn't been an issue in our district, certainly getting homework done is, is, is often an issue for a lot of people, right? But, but the contract between a parent and a school, we felt just sort of crossed the line. So that was one thing we suggested removing. On page two, we talked about our full, on the third bullet, if you see the bullets there, our full partners in their child's education, and are included to assist in the education of their child. We run, we suggested in the decision-making on advisory committees, right now, we don't have advisory committees, we're not required to have advisory committees for certain things, but it is certainly up for discussion. And then on page three, we talked about, there's a section that says, "The board, along with its superintendent of schools and other appropriate district staff, will undertake the following actions to ensure parent and family member involvement in the development of the district-wide Title I plan." And that is, we listed listening hours, parent engagement evenings that we have, information sessions about Title I. So are there any other things that you, you know, think? So, are there any other things that you, you know, think that we should include in that? It's really a discussion. Those are the primary places that we believe we would engage parents in a conversation.
So, where it says, like, "List activities such as who will be responsible," do we list them there? Like, how does?
Yes, mm-hmm.
So, our policy would actually list what those things were?
List the types of things, yes. Like, some of those things that I just said. The other one, where it says, "List specific actions, such as holding flexi, meetings at flexible times, partnerships with community organizations," we can list all the different types of things. And then, in number two, one, and two, and three, again, the activities would really just, our parent-teacher conferences, workshops that we have for parents, like our math homework night, our math homework help nights, those types of things.
So, technically, we should not vote on that motion at all, then?
Correct, mm-hmm.
So, we should just table that motion?
Exactly, mm-hmm.
Now, if it ends up in here by policy, like, for instance, I mean, the question here are not, I mean, it says "will," doesn't say, "we'll, you know, offer these, these possible opportunities." It's very prescriptive in saying, "We will do these things." Now, if we don't end up doing a math homework night, for some reason, then we're in violation of our own policy. So, I just, as far as how confining, you know, yeah, how confining the language is, especially if it says the district "will," I think it should be.
Broad.
Broad.
Mm-hmm. Like, parent engagement evenings, or parent engagement opportunities.
Or homework help nights, it's something that's not very specific.
Correct, mm-hmm.
Because eventually, at some point, we're going to have a homework help night, it might not be math.
Mm-hmm. Right.
And I mean, I think we do a really good job at reaching out to parents.
But this is really about Title I. This is really about Title I.
Title I, okay.
And there's a, there's been a recent change, and a more attention to Title I, and the parent engagement piece throughout New York State. So, really, that is where the focus is, and really, how do we engage parents in understanding? We get monies towards Title I funds, which we generally use towards our academic intervention services. So, really, having parent input, and engaging parents in how we use those funds, and how we meet the needs of students.
But like, you know, I mean, I'm thinking, as a classroom teacher, I didn't necessarily reach out differently to students that had, you know, that, who's, who were in the before-school reading program, or something like that. So, I didn't make any extra effort for those people, and, I mean, are we expecting teachers to do that, or is the school expect?
No, I think the school is expected to really engage parents in terms of Title I funding, and how we use that, and gain input into how we use our funds, our Title I funds.
And what happens if we, those parents are busy and can't participate?
Well, we have been, we've been doing this for many years. Like, we have PTA meetings, we have meetings with PTA members that we'll engage in, and talk about Title I services, how we use them, we get input. We'll talk about Title I funds, or how we administer our support services using Title I services at math homework help night, or, so it's really, that's the part that is required. The parent engagement piece, we do all the time. This policy really is addressing a narrow area of parent engagement. We do a lot more, but the district itself has to engage parents in Title I, how we use Title I funds. Does that make sense? I know it doesn't, but, but does it make sense?
No, it makes sense, I'm just concerned that we're not.
What's that?
I'm just concerned that, I mean, I think of all the years I was on, I went to PTA meetings, or whatever, a couple of PTA meetings I went to last year had like, three people, like.
Right.
And we weren't discussing Title I funds. Like, this is not something that's ever been, like, part of my radar.
Correct.
And I just, either I missed it, which is entirely possible, or I think we're not, I just want to be sure if this is what we have to do, that we're doing it properly. And if we've kind of been lax at saying, "Yeah, well, we offer it," and, I just want to be sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing.
Right. It's not our district, right? It's the entire state.
No, no.
It's a topic of conversation at every meeting I've been at for the last year.
Every single meeting.
Yeah, is Title I, and the state, for whatever reason, has now sort of identified this as an area of focus. So, every school, every Board of Education is having similar meetings, that's why this policy became required. It's always been an expectation of Title I, that we provide residents access, or opportunities to inform how to use that money, and now they're just being much more formal about it. So, we have to be more purposeful about providing opportunities for community members and parents to not only know how we use our Title I money, but provide them the opportunity to maybe guide us in another direction. All we can do is provide opportunities. If nobody shows up to participate, we think that we use our Title I monies very effectively. So, we will continue to do so, unless we see enough feedback from community members that guide us to use that money elsewhere.
So, I guess, part of what needs to happen is, is we have to start documenting all of this stuff, that's specifically for this.
We do.
Rather than just saying, "Well, we do in this broad area," and so it's been covered.
Correct.
But actually documenting that we're doing it for Title I things.
Well, I think the feedback is the important, is an important component. So, we may think that, oh, a lot of these families are going to need evening meetings, let's have evening meetings, but maybe, in fact, a lot of these parents work 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., and they actually want an 8:00 o'clock in the morning meeting.
Exactly.
But we're guessing what's needed. The policy speaks to get specific feedback, find out, get the input from the parent base, what do you need? And it may also, I don't, I ran through the policy, parent literacy is sometimes something you can use Title I funding for, workshops about the curriculum, so parents can help engage their children. I think that as equity becomes a big conversation across the state, the gap is getting more and more clear, that people who are eligible for Title I funds are falling further and further behind. And why is that? Because if you ask every district, I think every district will tell you, "We do a lot of work on parent engagement, but yet the gap is getting bigger and bigger," and I think that that's what this policy is about.
So, one suggestion I would make is really, we can start with this policy by engaging parents, even in the development of the policy. You know, Guy has been on policy committees before, you know, between now and the next meeting, I could certainly, you know, if you guys want to participate, or if somebody wants to participate, or more than one, certainly participate in a committee, and then certainly, I can send out, you know, messages to the PTA, to the PTSA, to the foundation, and really see if we can have more parent input, even on the engagement policy.
Well, and maybe target the parents of kids who are actually affected by these policies.
Right, because I'm thinking those that are, those that are active in PTA, PTSA, are probably not those.
Right.
That are really in part of this.
May or may not, right. Okay. Absolutely. Any other questions?
I would say boil it, I mean, any policy that takes seven pages to describe is like, like my eyes are rolling back after the third page. You know, like, there's got to be a way of.
Agreed. Well, there's policy, this is policy and regulation.
Okay.
So, they're two separate things.
Okay.
Okay. I don't think we have any students yet. Do we know what the situation with students representatives is yet?
Nope. Crickets, crickets, crickets.
Okay, okay. It's not often that we get them before October, anyway.
We do have a PTA report, because I have.
So, I think Mrs. Bellino will be presenting the PTA report.
Just sorry they couldn't be here tonight, they sent their words. The PTA has a brand-new website and an email address. The website address is the same, at putnamvalleypta.org, but they've made it easier to navigate. The new email is putnamvalleypta@gmail.com. They report that the first day of school, they had their kindergarten coffee and Kleenex event for the kindergarten families, and there were many happy smiles, and, excuse me, many smiles and happy tears. This week, the PTA hosted Welcome Back Breakfast at the middle school and the elementary school. The elementary school back-to-school picnic is tomorrow, Friday, September 13th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on the backfield. It's a free event, please come with your dinner, desserts to share, and blankets to sit on while enjoying the bubble bus. Please note, this is not a drop-off event, and all students must be accompanied by an adult. They'd like to ask everyone to join them for their first PTA general meeting, which will be on Monday, September 16th, at 6:00 p.m. in the elementary school auditorium, and it will feature a meet-and-greet with the new elementary school assistant principal, Mr. Chickory. On Tuesday, the 17th, there'll be an arts and education event. Simon Says will be performing at the elementary school. The middle school book fair begins on Monday, the 23rd, and runs to the 25th during the student lunch periods in the cafeteria, and volunteers are needed to help set up and run the event. The last day to apply to be an elementary school class parent is Friday, the 20th. To apply, visit the Class Parents tab on the website for more information. To place your orders, please visit the website also for the PVES and MS Spiritware. It can be ordered online, or by submitting the form and payment to the PTA mailboxes at the elementary school and the middle school. The Picture Day at the elementary school and the middle school will be on Monday, October 7th, and retakes will take place on November 13th. They're excited to announce new changes to the ordering process, and they please, they asked that you please look at the picture packet on the website for more details, and volunteers are being seeked for help on both days. Gender 101 event will be held on Wednesday, October 16th, at 7:00 p.m. in the elementary school auditorium. Glisten will present information on the gender spectrum and how to be an ally. The presentation will be followed by a Q and A and a panel discussion, and light refreshments will be served. For more information, to purchase items, or to sign up to volunteer for events, please visit the website, or like them on Facebook. That's it.
And then that move allows us to move on to public comment on any agenda items, any agenda items at all. Without that, we can move on to new business.
We need to remove the second, third resolution, though. We needed a motion to remove that from the agenda.
I move that we remove the third item on the new business agenda.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let me move on to number one. Jeanette?
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Susan O'Connell as the CPSE chairperson, a .2 FTE position for the 2009, I'm sorry, 2019-20 school year, effective September 1st, 2019. The assignment is in addition to her full-time assignment as a school psychologist at the elementary school.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Danielle Lopez to a probationary appointment of Campus Monitor, effective September 1st, 2019, with a minimum probationary period of eight weeks, October 27th, 2019, and a maximum of 52 weeks, September 1st, 2020, at the middle school, on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And Ms. Lopez is here, can she walk and?
She can do.
Come on.
You have to do this thing.
Start there.
Whichever way you want.
Live your best life.
We're harder than middle school students.
Wash the wires.
Please don't fall down.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Do you have your speech prepared? Number four, the new number three.
Resolved to amend the 2019-20 tax warrant resolution that was approved by the Board of Education on August 15th, 2019, as follows. Resolved on the recommendation of Superintendent Schools that school taxes be extended against the taxable property of the town of Putnam Valley, Carmel, Cortland, as appears on the tax list hereby are levied, and be it further resolved that this Board executes warrants on September 12th, 2019, for each of the towns. For the town of Putnam Valley to be effective September 1st, 2019, in the amount of $33,303,470 less, star, as per Document 73/20, attached the official minutes of this meeting on file in the district office. The town of Carmel to be effective September 1st, 2019, in the amount of $125,606 less, star, as per Document 74/20, attached the official minutes of this meeting on file in the district office. And the town of Cortland to be effective September 1st, in the amount of $4,50,934 less, star, as per Document 75/20, attached the official minutes of this meeting on file in the district office. That these warrants be for the portion of the district lying in the town of Putnam Valley, Carmel, and Cortland, and the collection period ends October 31st, 2019, and that said warrants be delivered to the tax collector of Cortland and Putnam Valley, and be it further resolved that the collector may make no changes or alterations in the warrant or rolls, except as provided in Section 551 through 558 of the real property tax law, and shall issue tax statements and make collections pursuant to the applicable provisions of the real property tax law.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda.
Ms. Ruffa.
You never get to read.
I never get to read, this is exciting.
It's going to be really hard.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda items two through 15, as presented to the Board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Just a second, I got to get it up. We're approving CSE, CPSE placements, we're approving budget transfers of approximately $50,000 for special ed child, we're approving additional hours for staff members who support special needs children, and for some training of staff. We're approving staff members who work during summer clinical work with our students. We're approving the auctioning of surplus property, which are five buses and one dump truck. We're approving agreements with Brigger Security Services for the 2019-2020 school year, and they will employ a professional security officer who are unarmed to our district. We're authorizing the Superintendent to enter into a memorandum of understanding for including an additional wide safety plan with Putnam County and Brigger Security to supply safety officers. We're approving agreements with Manhattanville College to supply teaching apprentices. We're approving instructional service agreement with the Carafin School for one of our students with special needs who will be attending that school. We're rescinding resolution regarding the contractual employees for the ESY program. We're approving additional revisions to the club and corresponding advisors for the three schools, and we're, we're going to post all the new clubs. We're approving additions to the substitute tool list, we're approving 11 staff members who will be monitoring the after-school detention for the year, we're approving accidental insurance policies, contracts with American, with Great American Insurance Company, for accident insurance for our students, for our athletes, and that will cover, of course, the medical and in-school absences that are not due, that are due to accidents while they're at school. It does not cover illnesses, but it covers anything that might happen to our students while they're at school, and they miss school, and their medical expenses. And finally, we're approving additional coaches for the four, an assistant coach for swimming, and a lifeguard, we're approving modified boy soccer coach, and a modified volleyball coach.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we open up the floor to public comment, any topic from the vast audience, as well as anything that the Board wants to add. as well as anything that the Board wants to add.
Just noticing the security, I want to comment that ours is very good, because I couldn't get in to the building when I got here. So, but if we did want a board audience, is there a way that we can have the bell ring up here, or have the door open?
Door should just be open.
Okay. I thought that was just, now he went to the right. I thought that was just an oversight. But our security works very well. Thank you very much.
Do you need to throw rocks up at the window or the gate?
Um, the, I got a letter from the regional Westchester Putnam School Boards Association. They've been asked to sign a letter against vaping. They'd like all of the districts represented by the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association to say, um, yes, that they support that. It says, "The WPSBA cares deeply about the health of our youth. I'm working with a group of youth and adult activists on closing the gaping loophole that allows the sale of some flavored tobacco vape products with flavors that trap youth into a dangerous addiction. We're inviting groups such as the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association to show their support by closing this loophole by signing on to the attached letter." The only thing I'll have to ask Maureen, they want to, me to let them know whether we agree, and to attach our group's logo that they can use in communicating the support. So, I'll stop by and, but I, you know, I didn't want to do that without checking with the Board. I didn't want, almost every other district, oh, and you know who the first person who's sent a thing is? Mike Hannah. I was like, whoa, I know that name. So, he's from Irvington. So, this is, they've heard from Irvington, some of the other school boards, Henry Hudson, whatever. I just thought Putnam Valley should be included, so.
I mean, I, I don't think there's any issue with obviously getting on it. I just, you know, the, it's a stance for us, but the state's already gonna outlaw it anyway, so.
Right. Okay.
Natalie, our, our policy, we've already included our policies, code of conduct, whatever, to include it.
Right, and I think, and beyond that, I think the state has outlawed vaping on school grounds as well.
Yes, absolutely.
Doesn't mean, doesn't happen in the middle school bathroom, but that's a different story.
Exactly. Cynic.
That comes down to, now, I actually want to ask a question about that. Because it's not just a violation of our student con, uh, contract, it's a violation of state law. Is there a different penalty or consequence to students that do it because it's beyond being, uh, you know, a school thing, it's a state law thing?
If that's something we wanted to consider, we would have to look at our, we would have to amend our code, code of conduct. It wouldn't automatically qualify for something, but because of that, we certainly could change our code of conduct to reflect the severity of it.
Anything else from the Board?
No.
Then, "Resolved to convene an executive session for one manner of collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, the Taylor Law, after which no business will be conducted."
Second.
Take it a second, thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.